Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 6th of 2020. I don't want to take a lot of time here, and I know I'm out of dress code a little bit, but that's for a reason, and I'd like to recognize them. So it is National 4-H Week across the nation, and I'd like to recognize our 4-H groups in our county and their families. They do a lot of hard work, and they're dedicated individuals with their families and the projects, the community projects that they work on. I know right in our own courthouse down at the Extension Office, Amber Matheson and Brooke Moore are very active, along with many other individuals, and I would like to thank them for all they do for Jackson County. And if I could, I would just give you a little research that I found out. So there are eight 4-H groups and six Clover Kids group. So we have the Gary Young Guys and Gals, we have the Otter Creek Shooting Stars, the Emmeline Ridge Rollers, the Monmouth Coed, and the Baldwin Clover. We have the Bellevue Pioneers and the Bellevue Clover Kids. We have the Andrew Achievers and the Andrew Clover Kids. We have the Cloverettes, North for New Horizons. We have the McCoqueta Clover Kids and the Clover Cards Cover Kids. We have the Preston Trailblazers, the Preston Miles Clover Kids, and the Miles Mavericks. So that is quite a group consisting of 251 club members and 109 Clover Kids.
That's wonderful.
That's wonderful, yeah.
I don't want to take a bunch of time there, but I think it's very important to recognize them for all the work they do. They're tremendous, they're dedicated, and we appreciate that. Anybody else have any comments?
Well, I agree with that, and I was really happy to see that we got a $350,000 cat grant from the state, so that's going to put a big boost in the 4-H and fair building down at the fairground. So that was great news last week.
Yes, it was, and hopefully we can start digging the hole there, proceed a little bit, and where we can go. So with that, I will call a meeting to order, and first on our agenda today is Mr. Todd Kenny or Mike Clusing, our Jackson County Assistant Engineer.
Good morning.
So I turned it up. We'll see if that echoes back at all.
The first thing I have is the matching quotes for 250th Avenue or Y-61. They were open last week. I've reviewed those, just to remind everybody the four quotes. We have Midwest Contractors on Cedar Falls for $282,086. Cedar Falls Construction on Cedar Falls for $428,125. Midwest Concrete Biasta for $508,355. And Denko Highway at Adella for $495,337.80. We'd ask the board to approve their Midwest Contractors quote for $282,086.
Still moved, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the Midwest Contractors' quote for $282,086 as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
And the next thing I have is a right-of-way utility construction permit for Andrew Telephone Company is to install a fiber optic to the new Cornelius C. Corn Office Building on 317th Street. We'd ask the board to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve their wide array utility permits on 317th Avenue as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
And that's all I have, at least.
Well, that was short, short and sweet. Mike?
I guess there is one more than.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
We had a letter from the superintendent of schools over Bellevue requesting a school bus stop at that sign on Bellevue Cascade Road, and we checked the site distance, and we have 600 feet from the west and 1,000 feet from the east, and according to the policy that we approved back in 2002, if it's under between 500 and 750 feet, we'll go ahead and split up the school bus stop at that sign, which we have a letter from the school system. So I instructed our sign man to reinstall that sign.
Good move.
Thank you, yeah, we sure do want to keep them safe. I guess, Mike, the only thing maybe is just an update on the bridge construction that's going on. I did have a chance to drive up there and check the one on Mill Creek. I think they were pouring the rails, the guardrails, and looks really good, really nice. I mean, that bridge really looks.
Yeah, they've got the railings poured yesterday, and there's two end posts on each end of the rails that they'll be pouring. They're pouring two today, and they'll pour two tomorrow, and that'll be all the concrete for the bridge. And then they should be out of there, the bridge crew should be out of there by the end of the week, and then the grading crew's coming in on Monday. The box cover up on High Bridge Road, we poured the center barrel section on Monday, and we've got two more pours to go there for the end sections on both ends. Those probably won't be done this week, maybe next week.
Yeah, really looks good. You really never realize that bridge on Mill Creek that it had, you know, has a curve and a slant to it. It's pretty amazing how they can do that, but that's a nice project done.
Going off to 188th Street. That's a big hole there now, that bridge gone. Yeah, they got it a lot of theirs. That's not going to happen for a while.
Yeah. All right, we appreciate it. Thanks, Mike. Thanks for the updates. I guess with my little presentation there about the 4-H groups, I don't know if I did the introductions, but anyway, Lisa, our county auditor is here. Larry McDevitt, myself, Mike Stinas, your county supervisors. I see Teresa is on the line. I don't see Mrs. Gerlock, but are there any others, visitors or citizens that are on would like to make any comments? Or hearing none, we will go to Lisa, our Jackson County auditor. Lisa?
Good morning. Motion needed to approve the minutes of the September 29th, 2020, and October 2nd board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for the September 29th and the October 2nd special meeting as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept, place on file, and authorize chair signature on the county recorder's report of fees collected for the month of September 2020 in the amount of
Still moved, second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the county recorder's filing fees of $47,079.69 as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion carried.
Motion needed to accept and place on file the Veterans Affairs Commission meeting minutes for October 1st, 2020 meeting.
Still moved. Second.
Motion and second to approve the Veterans County Affairs Commission meeting for October 1st, 2020 as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carried.
That's all that I have on my agenda today.
On the bottom of your agenda, where we talk about discussion on urns and monuments for the pioneer cemeteries, keep on. Has anybody actually, have we assigned anybody to really talk to the funeral homes or the cremation?
Becky. Becky was going to do that. She was going to put some numbers together, I believe, the last time I spoke with her.
We talked about, but I know Joanne is getting probably a little antsy because we haven't decided yet what we're going to do.
I guess when it comes to the urns and monuments, that to me would probably be a board decision, right? What you guys want? I know that Becky was going to be talking to some funeral homes or, you know, businesses that do cremations as far as if we want to change our policy or not. I haven't talked to her.
We talked about the grave digging. If we're only doing cremations out there, we talked about the cost of the digging was $300.
Right, right.
Is that the appropriate cost at this point in time for digging area for an urn?
Seems a little excessive.
Well, I think we, I would like to see us try to maybe come to a decision on this in a relatively short amount of time, because I know that somebody's got ashes waiting to be buried.
I think, but you approved those two ashes to be buried. You approved Joanne. You did approve Joanne. No, you did approve Joanne to release those two sets of ashes. Okay. So I'm going to keep it on, but yes, I think we need to have some discussion. How's that?
We need to find the zip.
Yeah.
See what the actual costs are.
Okay, I'll visit with Becky. That's all that I have for the board today.
Well, how many people voted yesterday?
You know, we had 60 people in the office that voted yesterday. I thought yesterday went incredibly well, all considering, and we probably turned away about 10 people that will be receiving an absentee ballot in the mail today, so we can't have them voting in the office and have one sent to their house. We mailed out just short of 4,300 ballots yesterday. They went directly from here from McCoqueta to the Cedar Rapids Post Office. I believe that the citizens will see absentee ballots in their mailbox as early as today, because I think they were going to process them and then bring them right back. So that's the good news. You know, Tuesdays are always a little bit slower, the mail is a little bit slower and such, so we haven't really had that many people come in today, but I thought overall with our mask mandate that we had, I thought that people had done a really good job of adhering to our new rules. We didn't have any issues yesterday, and we went through about a half a bottle of cleaner yesterday in between voters and such. So we're waiting on the customers, but we're also sanitizing after the customers or citizens leave from voting. So overall, I considered yesterday a B-plus to an A-minus day. So, yep, thank you.
Good deal. Thanks for that update, and hope everything runs as smooth as it has, and.
So far, so good. Yeah, so far, so good. We're, you know, every day we make some changes, we keep tweaking things, but yeah, so far, so good.
Well, I compliment your staff's efforts, because, you know, it's not an easy process, and thankfully the community is doing what they need to do.
Well, you know, at this particular point in time, and not that, you know, May was any different than November or October, but, you know, COVID is among us, and it's very present, and it's imperative that I keep my employees as healthy as possible, because if we were all to get sick, it would be, it would be, it would be, yes, I don't even want to think about that. So this is very important that we keep ourselves safe and healthy. Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Luann, is Luann available? We also have with us today Luann Gokee, our executive assistant. When I'm not in the room, I fail to see everyone sometimes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right. Tomorrow is the Jiminy Day. At 9:00 a.m. is a RTA meeting via Zoom for all supervisors. At 10:30 is the Eastern Iowa Tourism Annual Meeting by Zoom for all supervisors. At 3:00 tomorrow afternoon is a special meeting with ICAP by Zoom for Jack. And at 3:30 tomorrow afternoon is an Emergency Food and Children's Program Local Board Meeting by Zoom for me, who'll be in my office. 6 o'clock tomorrow night is a 911 service meeting for Mike. Thursday, October 8th, at 7:00 a.m. is a hometown pride, healthy meeting for Mike, and I believe that's moved by Zoom now. 10:00 a.m. on Thursday is an Iowa DHS Council Meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at 4:00 in the afternoon is a local emergency planning committee meeting conference call for all supervisors. Friday, October 9th, at 10:00 a.m. is Seventh Judicial Department of Corrections in Davenport for Larry. On Monday, October 12th, at 7:30 a.m. is an Early Childhood Iowa Executive Board Meeting by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, October 13th, at 9:00 a.m. That afternoon from 1:00 to 4:00 is an ICAP zoning webinar for any supervisors. And at 4:00 in the afternoon is a McCoqueta River Watershed Management Authority meeting, probably by Zoom for Larry. Then, it's all business. I have to go to the board this morning.
Well, that was very nice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Luann. Do you know, is Ben going to come, or?
We'll find out.
So Larry, in the beginning of the meeting there, I don't know if he was there or heard this, when I was plugging the 4-H.
I'm ready for you anytime. Are you coming down to Jiminy? Okay, thanks.
Back in our old stopping ground, I think it was the Cottonville Cornhuskers, correct?
The Cottonville, the 4-H Club?
Yeah.
No, it was Lamont Sunshine Kings and Queens.
Yeah, Lamont had one, but I think Cottonville did too.
And it was the first coed 4-H Club in Iowa.
Ooh.
That goes back to 1960-something.
You made history.
We did.
So again, if anybody sees any 4-Hers this week, it is National 4-H Week, and recognize them and then thank them for their accomplishments and hard work.
So when was 4-H started in Jackson County?
Woo, we would have been before that, but we were the first one to incorporate girl's.
Oh.
Wow. Are you cold?
It is very cold in my.
We were complaining about the air conditioner.
Yeah. It works.
I would guess Amber could give us some history on when it started, but.
Four people. I was just curious.
Yeah. I would say Amber Matheson would know that, but I didn't ask her that. Has Ben there?
Yes, he is.
There he is. All right, we have, we're in a work session here right now with Ben Cobra, our Jackson County zoning administrator. Ben?
Good morning. So I apologize for being late last week. I was out talking with a resident at 17972 43rd Street. This is the nuisance at property out there, just west of Taco John's and it's been my client on 43rd Street. So my initial site visit, lot of garbage, you know, in bags, kind of loose food items. That was in late August. My second site visit was a few weeks later, and Ben addressed some office, the neighbors had tried to approach him about getting stuff cleaned up, but hadn't nearly done enough for me to change my mind about that. So I was going to serve him there with a seven-day notice to abate. We discussed things, kind of deal with the situation where there, you know, wasn't going to be a lot of understanding with what this meant or what that meant. Basically, I told him, I'm going to give you three days to get this cleaned up. Oh, I'm going to come back with, you know, fines and stuff. So I actually took Friday off, so I forgot to tell him that, but I went out this morning again, so I met with him, met with Mr. Singletary. So in my view, the work performed was a satisfactory abatement. The stuff that I was most concerned with was a pretty sizable pile of canned, rusted canned goods, actual, like, household waste. You know, the neighbors had complained about rats. When you go out there, there's maybe 20 cats. It's one of those situations, like, I don't know if they're, I believe the rats would be the problem, because I think the cats would probably take care of them. Anyway, he did, actually did a really good job. So, you know, I told him that it looks good, you know, obviously we've got a file started. Talked with the neighbors who had complained the most, contacted me over, you know, basically since late August, they had been contacting me and submitted complaints early last month. So this one was addressed, you know, so I just told them, like, don't let it get out of control, like, you know, if you, you know, doing stuff like just setting a bag out for garbage even is going to, you know, that's going to be an issue, you know, just for more than a day or two. But, you know, I think to his credit, he did a good job. We'll keep monitoring the situation. I told the neighbors to keep monitoring the situation, just so, you know, we can make sure he did it. But, you know, we had, like I said, we had six complaints solved from the neighbors around there, and, you know, he got, he got a clue, and, you know, did that, and we were able to have some nice visits, and, you know, hopefully he can keep that under control. So, yeah.
How about Iron Hill Church?
I will, I'm going to go out there and see. I don't think anybody was there, but I'll go out and knock on the door and see. I think this process works a lot better, you know, than just me trying to visit with somebody. I really don't, you know, don't think being impersonal about it is the way to go, but, you know, I figure the guy's going to have a day job, so I'll try to talk with them. And, you know, if I have to, I'll resort to sending Terry to go find him.
The note on the door, what's your phone number?
Yeah, I mean, I've got that in the past where I just put, you know, tape into the door and tell them to call me, and, you know, the notice looks threatening enough where they see $750 per day, you know, hopefully they call and we can arrange some kind of meetup. But the one out in Iron Hill, you know, that's the, you know, problem, just not just the junk cars, but also there's stuff, there's a gooseneck trailer hanging out, I think in the right of way, so, you know.
It is.
We're getting into, you know, whether it's weird, we might get snow sometime, and we got, you know, if a snowball might hit that or something, so I don't think it's that far.
Our favorite discussion, the alarm.
Yeah, the alarm, no, you know, no progress, but I will, I've had, I've been meaning to get that filed with the court, so I'm, I'm ready to go.
I believe that they're spending at least a dozen grand, but it's just a whole problem. There's no fence out of nowhere.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know, but it's.
Time to. Time to get something done there.
Absolutely. I agree. Permit activity, I know I've been emailed about some, I've gotten back to some folks wanting to get those permits out. I think.
What is the process on that? Why does it take so long?
It shouldn't, it shouldn't take that long. I think what we have, the most, the one that I think we hadn't gotten a call about, that permit application was very messy as far as, you know, things being filled out incorrectly. So I think what happened is I get, I get it, and I look at it, and I'm like, all right, what are we trying to do here? What am I approving exactly? The sketch should be done, when they submit it, they submit a, so this was an accessory structure or shed, I think, so they submit the application along with it, with a sketch showing an overhead photo, so I can see building footprints, numerous setbacks are indicated. This really wasn't done that way. The sketch kind of conveyed the idea, so I just, when I got it, I had to decipher some things, then it got put to the wayside, and then, you know, I.
So you're able to build up, bring that site up on Beacon and print an overhead view, right?
I use Beacon to an extent. If someone, if you apply for something and wanted to use a Beacon overhead, that would be fine, you know, just the sketch itself has to be done someone to scale. If it's not perfectly to scale, I'm not going to make a, you know, I'm not going to have an issue with it, as long as it, like, you know, I can decipher it or figure out roughly where something's going. You know, in this case, there were some things not filled out correctly, and then the setbacks weren't really jiving with what I saw on Beacon. So then I had to, there's a clause in our R1 zoning district that allows structures to be built closer to a certain property line if adjacent property, if adjacent structures on adjacent properties are also closer in law play discussing, so, you know, I had to really go through and then look that up, and, you know, but I would say it should have been out a lo, you know, a while ago, a few weeks ago at least, so, but, you know, trying to get, we've done 60 this year, I think, after approving a few more, so I think that's actually higher than all of last year, January to December 2019. So I think hopefully we can get close to 80 by the end of the year for that.
Well, to me, that's a good thing, that's a good scenario to have. I guess, again, Ben, just make sure that we follow up in a timely manner on these permits, and let's get them moving so that people are, you know, anxious, especially with the weather coming up, you know, it's not going to get any better, so let's follow up with them.
And maybe if they're coming in to get a permit, do the Beacon thing and give it to them, and says, here's.
Yeah.
You know, on this map.
I do that a lot, and, you know, I tell them that either, you know, before they walk out the door, and I can just print this off for you, and you can either. A lot of times, yeah, and sometimes there's, you know, it does feel like there's some pressure, because they want to get a permit approved that day, which is sometimes fine when they bring in all their information, how far away from property lines is, how the dimensions of the structure. Sometimes they just, you know, come in without all that knowledge, and they say, well, I think it's 20 feet away, but I'm not, you know. I said, well, I need to know exactly, and, you know, so it's just one of those things where the more information they can bring in, the better, and, you know, it's possible to walk out the door.
Something else, after talking with Larry, you can get an estimate on the cost of it.
Yeah, that's.
You can put that on there right away.
And I think they also would like, if not blueprints, then, you know, an actual drawing that shows all the layout of the room, which it's not technically required by ordinance, but I believe I'm within my rights to insist on it, you know, if they do want that. So we'll start doing that as well, since they're, because of COVID, they're not getting let in to homes as much.
Just make sure that we're here, please. Keeping up to date.
Thank you.
The applicant certainly has some responsibilities, and we do too, so let's, okay, anything else?
That'll be it.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Okay, any other unfinished business? I guess I have talked to Matt with the Andrew Jackson Care about our updates and repairs to our sprinkler system, and we went ahead and, he went ahead and ordered that. I left that to him, because it was.
Except for people who are now at the care facility and manage it.
We have.
There's Brian, isn't it Brian Maines? Is that the last name?
Yes.
And then there's Matt Otting.
Well, Brian was at the legislative thing this morning.
Oh, okay.
And he was telling me that they're, they're not getting a lot of referrals.
Really?
And he doesn't know why, so I says, well, just do some more checking and find out. Todd was there too, so, and he says, some of them they're keeping for shorter periods of time, so, he says, some of them we don't want.
Right, yeah.
But he says, as long as we have beds, we'd like to utilize them, so.
Absolutely.
You probably don't want to advertise for that?
Well, I think they do with, with those that are in charge of placing people, but.
Sure. So that's going to be, our repairs are going to be made anyway. Matt ordered that. We have an email from him, so we have a paper trail. So that's going to be, our repairs are going to be made anyway. Matt ordered that. We have an email from him, so we have a paper trail. So if somebody drops the ball, then we know where it's at.
So that's the, what you're talking about is from Tri-State Alarm or Sprinkler System, yeah. Okay, do you know what the timeframe is going to be on that?
I do not.
Okay.
I don't really have anything else. Uh, did, did we, does anybody know, did we get the 28E back from the city?
You know what, Mike? We don't think so. Um, I talked to Luann this morning and I said, let's make a contact to Gerald and see where the original is at so we can get it signed and we can move on. I was under the assumption that he was supposed to bring it the next morning after their city council meeting, but
That's what I thought they.
That didn't happen. So here we are a week later waiting.
Well, let's call him and find out where the hell it's at.
Yeah.
I sent him an email and said, where do we have this? So.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Keep us updated on that. And anything else, gentlemen, ladies?
Possible interview tomorrow afternoon?
Possible.
It's going to be, the interview is going to be on Thursday.
On Thursday, Thursday afternoon.
Thursday afternoon. At 3 o'clock.
And the office call is at 4.
Is it 4? That's correct. Yep.
All right, sounds good. I guess I'd make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carried. Meeting adjourned. Have a good day. It's a very nice day out. Get out and enjoy it.
Will do.